Be good?
Good.
Live, okay? Welcome everyone to the Lincolnville Selectmen's Meeting. It is December tenth. Josh, would you care to read the quote of the meeting?
Sure. There are two rules for success. One, never tell everything you know. Roger Lincoln.
Thank you. At this point, I would like to open the podium for any non-agenda items for anyone who wish to get up to address the board. Seeing nobody rushing up to the podium, I'll assume we're all here for agenda-relevant items, so move along to the Administrator's Report.
Completely off-guard. I guess I can save that down for solid waste discussion. It's the only thing I have really outside of what's on the agenda.
Okay, well, if you forget anything, just jump in. Let's move along.
Oh, I do have one thing.
Jumping in.
Dog licensing. Dog licenses expire at the end of the year. Please come register your dog while the fee is low because after the grace period goes by, you'll be charged an additional twenty-five-dollar state fee if you don't license your dogs on time, and we don't like to collect the late fee, so please do so.
You can do so in person here with the friendly folks here at the town office or online.
Or online, correct.
Okay, well, let's roll into upcoming meetings and announcements.
All meetings are here at the town office unless and else otherwise. The Lakes and Ponds Committee meets Tuesday, November twenty-seventh, seven PM. Planning Board meet, not November. Why is that? That's weird, sorry. That's an obvious, that's an obvious something. Mistake. Planning Board meets Wednesday, December twelfth, seven PM. Lakes and Ponds Committee meets Tuesday, December eighteenth, seven PM. Conservation Commission meets Monday, December tenth, that was today, at four. Wow, that's way out of order. Town Office will be closing at noon on the twenty-fourth and close all day on the twenty-fifth. The Board of Selectmen will meet on the twenty-sixth at to-be-determined time. Planning Board also meets on the twenty-sixth of this month.
I have a question. Are we still meeting with the Alsboro Select Board in two days?
You are. Two o'clock boat.
Yep.
Okay. Just want to make sure to-
Be there.
Miss it.
Twenty minutes early?
Just want to make sure the public is aware if they want to come to Alsboro and-
Hang out.
Witness the meeting.
Pay for a ticket. And do you want the board to come to a consensus regarding time right now for the twenty-sixth meeting? I think we had roughly decided.
You had roughly decided. It looks as though you'll also, in addition to approving the payroll and treasures warrant, may have a special town meeting warrant to sign that night, so... I don't know whether you want to discuss that now or when we get down to that.
Okay.
Because I don't, I don't know when the Budget Committee is going to be able to get together to make their recommendations, so.
Okay. Well, we'll let that be for now. Upcoming community events. Anyone have anything to share? The Lincolnville Sewer District is meeting on the, it's Tuesday, the eighteenth, at six fifteen PM, and that is at the LIA Building, which is thirty-three Beach Road. We have two sets of meeting minutes to discuss and potentially approve, first being November twenty-sixth.
I move that the Board approves the November twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? Thank you very much. And we had a meeting on the twenty-ninth by default in attending a joint CSD meeting.
I move that the Board approves the November twenty-ninth, two thousand eighteen meeting minutes as presented.
So moved?
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? Thank you very much. And we have both the Harbor Committee Chair and the Harbor Master here to give us their annual updates. Nick, would you like to come up first, or? Come on down, Nick.
Come on down.
I'm Nikhil, the Chair for the Harbor Committee. We met about a week ago, and we came up with some suggestions for the Board. Our first suggestion is a ten percent increase in fees across the board, just to keep in line with inflation. And the other suggestion is to remove the skip fee that was instated about two years ago and add it to the mooring fees because this spring you approved that all mooring holders have a skip, so therefore all mooring holders should pay for a skip. There shouldn't be another box to check. Just make it easier. And the other thing was maybe some kind of clarification in the tour boat section that states per vessel, so that if there's a business that owns more than one vessel, they don't, maybe try to pay for just one of the boats to do a tour boat or whatnot. And that was it for the fees suggestions, and we did talk over possible maintenance things and whatnot. And I'm sure Mike has something to add to this, but what was glaring us right in the face that needs the most attention is obviously the decking, which we've talked about time and time again. That's our presentation to the Board. Any questions?
This might be a question for the Harbor Master, but do we have, I know we had asked for some sort of documentation of how much it would cost to replace the decking? Do we have that?
I think that was aimed towards the Harbor Master on that one, but I'll have to ask him.
Thanks, Nick.
No problem.
Mike, you're up.
Mike Hutchings, Harbor Master. I guess what I'll do is just give you a brief overview. On the fee increases, I think ten percent is fine, but we need to make sure we round off to the nearest dollar because we're ending up with some kind of an oddball thing like we did once before. All right. Obviously, Nick touched on the deck, and you had a question about approximate cost. I've talked to a, one of the people that expressed interest in it before, but without going out to bid, these are just kind of round numbers. So I think, and I don't know how you want to proceed with it, but the drive section, the rampway going down in is in much better repair than the actual physical forty-by-eighty deck. So my thoughts were, where money is always an issue, is to do it in sections. The rampway could go a while longer, like two or three, four years maybe, maybe a couple planks thrown in. But on the forty-by-eighty foot section, I think you're looking somewhere between eighty to a hundred thousand with handrails as needed and curbs.
And that's something verbally, or is that something he?
Verbally. Verbally. I mean, he's not, until it goes out to bid, I mean, nobody's going to give you a hard number because we got to bid it. But I think that would give you something to shoot for, which is, I think, about all we can do at this point. I don't know any other way, unless David's got a suggestion.
Not a good one.
It's going to be hard to get a price from somebody unless it's out, you know, competitively. Anyway, so that's what you're looking there. The moorings obviously have been maintained every year, and they're in good repair. They still don't get really a lot of use. They get some transit use, but very limited. Most of the consistent use they get is from people's moorings that something's wrong with them, they need to use a mooring for a day or two if people are in the harbor. We installed a new washdown pump, which worked great. We fixed the hydraulics on both winches, hoses, and whatever they needed, and they're in good repair. Chains, et cetera, and all the working hardware has been updated, and I mean, it's going to need annual maintenance, but it's in good repair. We had a major increase in pedestrian traffic this year, but that was due to the ferry increases. A lot of people were running the quicksilver. A lot of people refused to ride the ferry, so there was quite an increase in pedestrian traffic. The outside float, the furthest one out that's out of service right now, we're down to the winter configuration. The new incline, the deck is down, in the down position. It was down. It ended up up again, but it's down today. Somebody probably flipped it up to use it for a slide, but it's down. The outside float is the oldest float, and I talked with Kurt, that works at Dak Harbor Boat Yard, and he indicated to me that he could make it go another year. So I think basically what we're looking at now is trying to figure out something with the deck for this coming year. This winter would be, or early spring would be nice, so I think we need to get the ball rolling. I don't know what's involved to make that happen, but that's not, I think that's, this guy, his thing to make it go. Other than that, that's about all I've got. I'm sure you get some questions. That's kind of an oversight of what went on. It was busy. It was so, so busy this year. There's a lot of boat, a lot of moorings that people had boats and didn't use them for one reason or another. Seems a higher number than other years.
How's the mooring permit demand slash turnover from the inside harbor to the outside harbor?
Run that by me again.
Inside harbor moorings. How much change-up is there? Have people given them up? Do we have new people getting in there?
We moved the mist, the list along both this year and last year. We've had people that have expressed interest that were granted privileges, which haven't got them into service. It's something I get to lean on again this year because it's, it happens just the way it is. It's partway through the season. They've already made arrangements for the current year, so it's always a little bit of a delay. Anybody's got a boat is obviously in the wintertime probably finding a place to put it before we actually know if they're going to get a spot. The outer harbor's about the same. I don't think we've moved any in the outer harbor because I don't think we've had any change out. But we have moved the inner harbor some, small boats.
Remind me, Mike, do we have any definition on the book in terms of what defines a dinghy? Is there a maximum size or tonnage?
Thirteen feet.
Yeah.
Thirteen feet, yeah.
And for the most part, everybody's-
It's in pretty much compliance. I mean, there may be some that were a little fourteen feet, but it's pretty much in compliance. There's not anything outstanding. Okay, I mean, you'll have boats come in from the island, tie that for the night or something, but that's just your transit stuff. The other thing is I was keep, I didn't break down the, I've been keeping a logbook, and in the off-season like now, it's, it's, I was writing down whenever I did anything, addressed anything. In the summertime, I stopped doing it. I just wrote down the days I didn't address anything because it was a constant thing during the day. But this time here, it's, of course, slows down dramatically. I did not have the time to break that out, given how many days involved, but it's quite a lot. You're always answering the question, answering the phone, dealing with something on a daily basis.
Yeah. Is that something that you and David could get together and put in our packages and non-agenda item?
Take long. I just could go through two books, that's all. Just one book in each truck.
You just had explosives move across the-
Yeah, yeah, we did this past, this past week. They've been moving them last week, and I think they moved some today. Those are the first ones. Delayed it off until fall time, and I thought it would be less disruptive, which is a good thing. Everybody's familiar when they're transporting explosives across the pier, you can't be on the pier. Which has created some conflicts. Last year was a little more dramatic because people said, "Well, I paid the permit." Well, they weren't paying a permit at that time, now they are, so. And it is disruptive. I mean, and it's a little foolishness, but that's the way the homeland security regulations are. It's nothing to do with the state or anything. It's just Fed.
I have a question about the decking. So the way it's current, the way the pier's currently used, if we replace the decking next year, how long would you expect that to last?
To do the job?
No, yeah, once it's, once it's been replaced,
Right.
what would be the lifetime of that?
We get thirty years plus out of this one. So I'd expect it would probably, actually, I would think maybe we might do a little more because the first year or two, we did some, not substantial damage, but we did do some damage to it on our own ignorance about getting the sand off there in the spring. It gets some occasional winter sand, and the tires turning around, it's just like a grinding wheel. And it did do considerable damage to us, we realized what was going on. So every year, we sweep the dock now, which helps a lot.
And how much, how much where do you think plowing that during the winter does to it?
I don't, it's frozen. It's pretty rugged in the wintertime. It's basically frozen. The first few years when we plowed that, when we went and reset all the nails, like every other year or something, because the nails are the ones that will kind of work their way up, or the wood wears off, one or the other. So we'd reset the nails, and that would be the biggest thing, but I really don't think the plowing tears it up that immensely. I think it's more just vehicle traffic. It'd be nice if we could eliminate the unnecessary traffic on the pier because that's probably the majority of the traffic. People come down, turn around, see. I don't know effectively how you could do that. Unless you had a gate up there. That's going to inconvenience people so much. You know, and another project that I think would be nice, we have a pedestrian waiting area, and I think we briefly talked about it at one point, of putting some kind of, just a roof over it, because lots of times those people are standing around in the rain. Or a roof and a one-sided or a two-sided thing, just to break the wind. It wouldn't be an expensive project, I don't believe, but something I think we need to look at the deck first, but that would be a nice thing to do. Then next year, we got to build a float, so.
Well, and that was going to be my question, is that, is that something that you brought up with the individual that you talked to about the deck? Or with that very rough number, knowing that it is just totally a verbal number? Was that just including decking and handrails, or did it, did you guys toss around any other ideas?
Just decking, handrails, and curbs. Some of the handrails probably don't need to be replaced. I mean, if, should we replace them, we wouldn't have to worry about them again, possibly, but if it's a cost-money problem, we could defer some of that. Because that's nothing to do structurally with the deck. It's bolt-on, bolts-on to the curbs, basically. I would say probably if you're going to rip the curb up, you're going to replace the handrail. We don't have to tear the curb up. You could leave the handrails. I think we figured on doing all the handrails.
Yeah. And you're feeling good about all of the dock anchoring points and whatnot going into winter?
Yeah. I'm going to add a safety line onto that outside float. It actually hasn't really been much of an issue because that float's so much wider than the ones we were using before that it's got room to travel. I mean, that's what would happen. The other one, you'd get a low tide and a severe storm like the one we had a couple weeks ago or so. It was fine. I mean, they were taken a beating, for sure. The inclines were, but there was no damage, no noticeable damage. There's stress damage that you can't see, of course, but.
Any additional questions for Mike at this time?
Anything you can think of, Nick?
Josh? No? Okay. Thank you.
Good Christmas.
So, wait, can I ask you a question now that he's walking away?
Yeah, sure.
So this is an off-year for float, right? So we're not looking to get one built this winter for spring?
I talked to Kurt today, and we've got one that's not in the best of repair, but he assured me he could make it go another year.
I just wanted to-
I talked to him just before I got here.
Just wanted to verify so that we don't get the cells caught come spring.
Oh, I have a question. How much ultimately did we receive from Alsboro?
We've got five thousand dollars in, I think it was five thousand, in January of this year. And it's typically the January timeframe where they make their donation.
Five thousand.
Thanks, Mike. Moving right along, we have a conversation before us regarding internet services, particularly in this case with the homes at Duck Trap. Who would like to come address the Board first? Same, same. Sorry.
So everybody's got-
And just introduce yourself and where you live, sir.
My name's Tom Lyman, twenty-seven Osprey Circle, Duck Trap Retreat.
Thank you.
I'm just, I guess we're curious why we don't have a choice with internet providers when it seems like the rest of Lincolnville's got four or five choices? And everybody that we've talked to says that Lincolnville Net's pretty much the monopoly for our area. And they know that, so we're being overcharged, their service is horrible, and their internet speeds are cycling up in the county. So we're just curious what we need to do to have a choice, I guess.
Well, the hard part is, the long and the short of it is, the town doesn't control or have anything to do whatsoever with internet service providers. So as I understand it, we have, or there are in theory, up to ten different internet service providers?
There is thirteen providers that none of them service. There's like three miles of Lincolnville that Lincolnville Net is the only game in town, where Consolidated's a mile and a half this way, and they're saying that they cannot use it because Lincolnville has the rights to it. And it just seems kind of silly where other people have choices, but we don't have choice. And you guys can see the proposal, what they want to charge us to get decent internet speed.
Yeah, yeah.
Twenty-seven thousand, then we don't get a break. So what happens is, we have, we pay to have the services run to our development, but then they're going to use that and branch off to the rest of the neighborhoods that we paid for. It just doesn't seem right to me.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, David, but it's not under our purview to have any sort of influence over it at all.
We, the town isn't a licensing authority or anything like that. It's a, I guess, free-market enterprise.
But there is no free market. That's the problem.
But there's no prohibition to there being another provider. We're, we, the town, is not standing in the way of-
Yeah.
So who is standing in the way, I guess, is my question.
Red Zone doesn't, doesn't service your area?
No one does between Comcast. I think we looked at absolutely every provider. Where I spend tons of time on the phone, emails, and Lincolnville Net, I guess, is the only person. And what makes me mad is if they were fair about what they wanted to charge us, they'd be different. But thirty thousand to run cable eighteen hundred feet? How is that even realistic?
Yeah, I, believe me, I hear you. And this unfortunately is not the first time that we've had very frustrated citizens from various corners of Lincolnville come to us. And we have in the past hosted, just as purely as a host, to provide an area and a forum to get concerned parties with these providers of service in the same room. But that's about as far as we've ever been able to take it. Yeah, it's-
And Consolidated, I mean, they said they would love to do it, but by whatever regulation, they cannot run the line because they're only a mile and a half, and that would service the rest of Route One.
They do fiber optic as well?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, it's certainly not a municipal regulation or prohibition of any sort. So I'm not sure when they say they're prohibited by what, what authority they're being prohibited.
Do you guys have any suggestions on what route we should take? I mean, because I know that we've got all these articles in the papers and stuff, how Maine's so far behind the rest of the nation with internet speeds, technology, the whole infrastructure thing, and it just seems like we're getting farther behind the times.
So is Lincolnville Net, Lincolnville Telecom?
Yes.
There's like five names for one company.
Yeah, exactly.
It's confusing.
Depends on where you are between Denver, Scott, and up here, what they call it.
And the service is horrible. I mean, I work at home, and I pull huge files and stuff, and half the time, I don't get any service. I'm getting less than one meg up.
Are you on TSL right now?
It might as well be dial-up, quite honestly.
But it's not fiber optic?
No. No, all the homes, pretty much most of the new homes, they have fiber optic ran into them where it goes to one junction point. It's just getting that fiber for thirty thousand dollars, a hundred, no, one thousand eight hundred and fifty feet.
To that junction, okay. I personally want our town to explore municipal internet. I don't know if there's an appetite for that on the Board or for the public, but I think in, in the long term, that may be the best idea for our community. Obviously, that, that would be a long-term goal, but short of that, I don't, unfortunately, know how we can help.
Well, and, sorry, I just want to, for, for those of you who are new to Select Board meetings, we like to limit conversations between the podium and the, those who have microphones so that the folks at home can participate in the conversation. We don't want to have any dark corners of the conversation. So if you, we would love to have you get up and speak if you have a question or a point, but we'll have to wait.
Do we go to the state?
Um, so I hear your point, Josh. That would be a conversation for another day. And there are other municipalities who have taken that on for sure. That is an option. Unless David has a suggestion, I-
I don't have any good ones, and I, and I sense, I sympathize with the frustration because usually people's first stop is calling me. And that's why a couple of years ago, when we had that, the sit-down, when people were complaining about the service then, I think people were surprised at where there was fiber and where there wasn't at that time. I mean, how many years ago was that? Three?
About three, yeah.
And I'm semi-surprised that it's not closer to you folks as it is because I think one of the focus, initial focuses was down at the Duck Trap condominiums on the other side of the road.
They're trying to charge them the same as us, so they're double-dipping. It's like every infrastructure cost that they can pass on to the consumer, that's exactly what they're doing. I'm sorry, I'm just there rubbing me the wrong way for the past six months, so.
Oh, well, I mean, I, personally, I have been through various conversations with them, and it's been frustrating, to say the least.
Could we go set up something? I'll try to do a little bit more research or see if you guys can do something. I mean, how's Rockport and even other areas of Lincolnville? How does, how does a mile down in the same town have options? But we don't, I guess it's just confusing to me.
Yeah, the, I mean, the hard, I mean, the real challenge is, is that as a municipality, we don't have any power or control over what individual citizens have or choose to use as services. And so my, you know, off-the-cuff suggestion is that, you know, as the power of a community to petition and communicate with whatever level of intensity and frequency you wish, you know, with whatever provider, you know, and if you have a desired provider, you know, perhaps convincing them, you know, that you have a consolidating community who are interested in participating.
They want to do it. They want to get in. They're just, and I don't know if it's, if it's the FCA or who it is. I mean, I just need to know what way to go because they're being told that it's Lincolnville's territory, which makes no sense to me.
Yeah.
To us neither. And I'd gladly explore that with you in terms of, if you said somebody was a mile and a half away, to have the conversation about what, you know, what roadblocks do you see? Because there's certainly nothing that the town as a whole has put up for prohibition. Certainly not anything the Board of Selectmen can or has done. I don't know if they see an imaginary barrier, and I don't know what that, what that would possibly be.
So does that mean that, that from, from your understanding, companies can just run fiber into towns however they see fit? Or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I mean, obviously, there's a cost. Somebody else's cost to it. I mean, they've got to either bury the line or hang the line or whatever. They can't just go tack it up on CMP's pole. CMP's going to hold their hand out, want to get some sort of compensation for it.
Okay, don't get me wrong. We understand, you know, where we live and stuff. We'll pay. It's just, in, I'm in the telecommunications business, so I know what Comcast and everybody charges. It's five thousand dollars to put the pole on the property. That gets the cable there, and then they'll branch off to the- It's five thousand dollars to put the pole on the property, that gets the cable there and then they'll branch off to the individual, individual's house as it is. But, I mean, I don't know, from Con- Consolidated, I, they said it has something to do with the phone lines, which makes no sense to me because I don't want phone. I don't even have a phone, so.
Yeah. I don't, it maybe, it, it might be worth a call to CMP who owns the, the rights to, you know, they have that right of way. I don't know if it's a combination of the DOT, I, it's something beyond us, outside of us.
Yeah, you found out, like, who, who's telling?
That, I mean, that would be my question.
Who's telling them that, that, that this is Lincolnville Telecom's territory, you know? Like, the people that you're saying are, wanna come in here.
Consolidated Comcast.
Yeah, so they're saying someone, like, I'm, I wonder who's telling?
Maybe I can get a written statement from them.
Yeah.
That would be helpful.
It'd be interesting, 'cause it doesn't, I mean, certainly from our point, it doesn't sound like there's anything in the town's end, there's, yeah, like you said, it seems like that everybody ought to be able to, it should be a free market, I don't get why.
I think we've all spent probably close to two hundred hours researching it and trying to, or even get people to at least come out and take a look. And they won't even come out and take a look, they say it's not possible.
Yeah, yeah, well, and, and it's not the first time we've heard this and unfortunately, we've, we've no answers. It just, it's, we can't, we as a municipal managing body can't get involved in what individual citizens choose for services.
But it would be interesting to hear, to fi- to trace back who it is is telling people that piece of information, who, who, you know, where is that coming from? This idea that this is their territory, no one else can put, put fiber in here. It just sounds.
Yeah, because, I mean.
None of us, it makes, it makes sense to anyone in this room for any reason.
Certainly, as you said, and others have experienced, there's certainly other internet service providers serving other areas of town. I know that at one point, for myself, we looked at a, at a wireless provider, but due to the geography of where my home is, it was like, sorry.
That's why we can't do the red zone.
And, and so we were lim- that limited our, some of our options as well. It may be in a similar circumstance, but.
Yeah.
If somebody's gonna hard wa- for lack of a better word, hardwire, even if it's with fiber.
Well, and the whole thing is, i- if it was a great product and it was a great company, and I wouldn't mind paying the price, but it's horrible for what we're paying. And then they know that, so the price is just, I mean, they're thirty-five, forty percent higher than any other cable company. But, I'll.
I hear you, I, it's, it's an awful position to sit up here and, and not.
Come on, you guys are supposed to give me all the answers, it'd be telling something I wanna hear.
Feel bad.
And it really, it's been, you know, I've been on the board seven years and it's been, yeah, and to not be able to have any illumination from either end is, is frustrating.
All right, well, I'll try to get something from Consolidated and see what piece of that roadblock is in the way.
Yeah.
See if I can get something around.
And keep us in the loop for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so.
I'd email you, it'll probably take a couple of weeks for it to go through.
Oh, I, I laugh, but I'm not, I'm, yeah, well.
All right, well, I guess we'll go from there.
Yeah, well, thanks for coming in and it's nice to.
Thank you.
It's nice to meet you. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Drive safely. Um, and now we have a conversation regarding animal control. David, do you wanna give a preamble?
Sure, um, on October twenty-second, Sharon, who was in the back row, was here. Uh, only three, uh, board members were here that night. Sharon had brought up a concern about animal control and specifically an incident that occurred down on Tanglewood Road or off Tanglewood Road. Uh, the board at that time said that they would like to have a discussion when all board members were present, plus now Kern's not here. And I think he was the one.
It could be any minute.
Yes, I'll talk very slowly, and he was the one that suggested we do it when everybody was here. So I contacted Heidi, Heidi Blood's here, she's our animal control officer, um, in hopes to have a discussion so that the board could understand a little bit more about what the animal control officer can do, can't do, should do, shouldn't do, and experiences, uh, so that we can try to match citizen expectations with citizen's willingness to pay, which is what we're always faced with. We are required by state statute to have an animal control officer. The person has to be certified within six months of appointment. Heidi's shaking her head, 'cause I must've got that right. Heidi, you've been here with us for.
David.
Whoops, Heidi's been with us for approximately five years and also serves a number of other communities in our region. With that, I guess I'll turn it back to you.
And we also, with the help of the Wages and Personnel Committee and the Select Board, have a updated and clarified, uh, job description.
Yeah.
Now, on file.
And I would note that, and maybe Heidi will talk a little bit about it, in addition to, um, the duties outlined in state statute, we have a couple of local ordinances regarding animals, no animals on the public beaches. We have a nuisance, um, ordinance and whatever else, so.
Would you like to come and address the board first, or?
I was gonna spectate.
Oh, okay. Sorry, selfishly, I wasn't here at the last select board meeting. Or that, that's what.
It's a simple, um, feeling I have that, uh, Lincolnville can have their own, um, animal control officer that does just Lincolnville. Um, maybe, you know, Appleton and Hope or whatever, but, so that we've got somebody right here that can get to, like, all the calls and that kinda thing. Um, there's also should be a substitute, you know, people get sick, people go on vacation, so there ought to be some kind of a standby person. Uh, I looked up online to see what Maine does about this and all the towns were there. Some towns have two, many towns have their own, um, and I just thought it was something that I, I don't know how to do that, to, um, bring it to the people, to ask a question. Uh, we're not having voting right now, so it's not a referendum. I didn't know if you, uh, did mass mailings, where you just ask people the question? Or, you know, how, how exactly you'd get that to the people? But I, I just have a feeling for animals, if I were younger, I'd do it myself, but, um, that's, that's been my idea, to get us our own. Also, I think a town of this size, um, to have gone in for a six million dollar school, shouldn't have any problem putting some thousands towards their animals, you know, we're animal lovers up here. So, uh, I think the whole issue can be kicked around. Belfast even has their own vehicle. And, you know, I don't know that much about the job, but, um, you know, I, I think it should be, can be and should be explored. Those are just my feelings.
Okay, thank you. Heidi, I'll invite you down.
I'm just here to answer questions. What can I tell you?
Do you wanna just tell us a little bit about what you do for us and for the folks listening at home and?
I'm pretty sure it's been five, maybe six years that I've been doing animal control for, for Lincolnville. I've been an animal control officer for almost twenty years now, um, in various towns. I am employed by six other towns, um, three in Knox County and three more in Waddle County, so I'm all over the place. Between all the towns that I service, my work week is between forty and fifty hours a week between all seven towns. And that, the trouble with animal control is it can vary greatly from one week to another. You know, I could have one big case that I'm dealing with for three weeks running and then not get anything for two weeks. So it's, but the, it averages out, um, to ten, fifteen hours per week is, is my best guesstimate for, for what an animal control officer from this town has done. Luckily, most folks in this town are pretty compliant with animal laws. A gentle slap on the wrist is usually all it takes to bring folks into compliance with dog licensing, dogs at large. And those are the majority of, you know, cases that I handle is loose animals. One thing that, that should be mentioned, and I think she may have, um, a concern with as well, is we don't have a backup animal control officer. So if I am sick, I call David. Um, luckily, that hasn't happened all too often. Um, but a couple of months ago, I was in the emergency room with a allergic reaction to something that we still don't know what it was. Um, so I wasn't available for about eighteen hours. And it's a struggle not, you know, being able to say, I'm not available, but call so-and-so. So I would certainly be interested in, you know, looking into the possibility of having a backup animal control officer. Um, it's very rare that I'm not available, but life happens. And with the other towns that I serve, three of them, um, have a backup animal control officer that I can call upon. It's quite rare that I ever need to, but it, it's nice to have that number to call to say, hey, I'm up in Bangor, you can get there a little quicker than I can. You know, can you transport a dog to the shelter for me? Or, you know, most, mostly the, um, backup animal control officers that work with me only do transport, because the animal law is, is pretty decisive and animal owners can get pretty dicey when they're being told to do something that they don't wanna do with their animals. So I lay that burden upon myself to, you know, if I have to summon somebody or there's a court case that's gonna happen, I wouldn't ask any of my backup ACOs to do that, um, just because it's, you know, I've been in the business for twenty years, I'm familiar with the territory, I know the laws. Um, I just don't think it's fair to somebody else to have to, you know, put that burden upon them when they're not comfortable with it. So, um, like I said, my backup ACOs basically transport to the shelter for me when I'm not available. That's, that's what I think their job is.
And I, I, I heard you just say, your role as like, if, if, um, it sounds to me like they're, in your opinion and in your experience thus far, that the, an, an ACO for specifically just the town of Lincolnville would not constitute a full-time job?
I don't think it would, I don't think it ever would, and, and not in my experience. There's, excuse me, certainly in the summer months, you know, there's busier times. In the spring, there's kitten season and, you know, things like that. You know, oh, yeah. So, I mean, there's certainly times when you could probably fulfill a twenty, maybe twenty-five hours a week, you know, per town, but I would have a real hard time, um, finding something to do for forty hours in, in just one town, yeah.
And Heidi or and/or David, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, well, and first, thank you for your reports, I really enjoyed reading through them.
Yeah.
I've, I, they're interesting. But we average, what, like, two calls a week, I would say, it seems like.
That you get here?
Yeah.
Yep, yep. A lot of calls that I get, and this is to nobody's fault but my own, but I get a lot of phone calls that folks are just looking for suggestions. I get a ton of wildlife calls that I generally pass on to, you know, the Wildlife Service or if it's just somebody that wants to borrow a live trap to remove a nuisance raccoon, I've got plenty and, and, so there are a lot of, a lot of things on my reports that you guys probably don't have any knowledge of at all, 'cause I forgot to write it down. Honestly, if there's no repercussion or follow-up or, you know, anything like that, um, a lot of phone call conversations just come and go.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah. But a lot of barking dogs, a lot of my dog wandered onto somebody's property or somebody else's dog wandered onto my property.
Yep.
Or, I mean, that seems to be fairly consistent in terms of.
That's the norm, yeah. Neighborhood, neighborhood disputes.
With a few things here and there.
Yeah, that, that's the general, um, stray cats and loose dogs.
Yep.
Is, is generally what I have to handle. Occasionally, we'll get, you know, we had a rabies scare a couple of years ago, so that gets a little dicey with, you know, talking with, um, different veterinarians and stuff in the area and just making the public aware that it, that rabies is huge, it's huge, it's here, it's everywhere. And that's a big concern of mine, is just educating people to keep your animals vaccinated.
Yep.
That itself, I, I could fulfill ten hours a week, you know, just following up with folks and reminding them, even your cat by law is supposed to be vaccinated.
Yep.
And a lot of folks just don't know that, they're not aware of what the laws are. So that's, a, a good portion of my time is also spent just educating people on what the lo- laws are locally and state level.
Yep. Does anyone have any more questions for Heidi?
So, you, as it stands right now, you, you can't take a vacation, you can't leave.
No, my, my own personal animals at home don't allow me to do that, so, and that's, that's a choice I made thirty years ago. I decided to have animals, um, so, yeah, no, vacation's not part of my lifestyle anytime. If I wanna go on vacation, I shut my phone off for an hour. And then it drives me, I might be missing a call, so I gotta turn it back on. But no, generally speaking, I'm not ever away for more than eighteen or twenty-four hours in the emergency room for whatever reason. A horse bite last week.
David, for budget conversation purposes, and I'm wondering if I could get a nod of other select board member heads, would it be worth getting some numbers together to look into what other similar municipalities may be paying a, an assistant part-time ACO so that we could explore the conversation? While when we go into budget season, it would be a helpful number?
Yeah.
Can I, can I check?
What are, what are we, what are we paying Heidi right now? Someone have that up top there.
I'm pretty sure it's forty-five hundred annually. Yep, and then it's broken down and made monthly. Um, I can tell you with the, the few backup animal control officers that I do have in, in my other towns, two of them are on an as-needed basis and they're paid hourly in mileage at, um, fifteen dollars hourly. And the third backup ACO that I have is paid an annual salary of one thousand dollars plus mileage, so.
And they're on, they're on call?
No, they're not on call, um, they only get called out if I call them.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So we, we didn't do it that way in the beginning, um, but dispatch was getting confused, you know, nine times out of ten, somebody's gotta leave me a voicemail, 'cause I'm on the other line or I'm out in the field chasing a dog or, you know, but I'll return that call within moments. And dispatch was getting confused with, well, we couldn't reach Heidi, so we're gonna reach out to these guys, and then we both end up responding and, yeah. So with those towns, we've decided that it's best if, if I make the decision that if I can't go for whatever reason, I call the backup ACO. That way you're not, you know, nobody's getting double-dipped on.
I, I think having a backup ACO at fifteen dollars an hour as needed when Heidi calls them is a great idea.
Yep, well, we, we'll have to put it through the budget process.
Right.
Yeah.
We've had, very had times in the past filling the ACO position.
At all.
At all. So I don't know, I mean, Heidi's been a godsend from what I have seen over the years of different times of trying to find somebody, trying to keep somebody that is willing to get the training, is willing to follow the rules, is willing to be nice and courteous with everybody. We, we, I, I can remember instances of all these things over the years.
I, I remember being a brand-new selectman at almost eleven o'clock at night. David had gotten, we didn't have an animal control officer, 'cause couldn't find one. David had gotten a call, then David got the call.
David, David didn't get a call because they, they called you or Chair, uh, and they hadn't announced it yet, so I got it.
Right, you got it, and then he called me and there were dogs that ended up being minivanned and then garaged because.
What do we do?
Until with the shelter open.
So you got your phone, I think, 'cause I called the wrong number, and then you came out and bailed me out, basically.
And then I, then I took the ju- dogs to the shelter and one of them got in the shelter, the other one ran away and I had to chase it around.
Oh, jeez.
Chasing around Rockport with a Rockport police officer.
So you're saying you don't want the backup position?
Um, I do, I do whatever the town needs me to do.
So I'm saying, in the.
But it wasn't fun.
Seven, yeah, seven, I, the, the value of your position is.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that.
Appreciate it, not getting a call at eleven o'clock at night.
It's generally a very thankless job, especially at eleven o'clock at night. It's generally a very thankless job, especially at eleven o'clock at night. But no, I'd I'd be very happy to, you know, entertain a part-time ACO.
If one could be found, I think it would be great if we could find some, if we could find somebody who would be willing to consider it.
The trouble with what we found in my other towns is finding somebody that, I live in Sears-Mont, and finding somebody that lives locally. Like, I'm animal control for Swanville, and thank God, my backup lives in Swanville. So if there's an emergency-type situation that, you know, there's there's cows in the road at four o'clock in the morning and somebody needs to get there, I can call them and say, hey, I'm gonna be there in twenty-five minutes, but you're two miles down the road, get there. So having somebody from Lincolnville would be very beneficial. And I can certainly reach out to a few people that I think might be interested, that have, you know, expressed interest to me in the past. I won't mention her name right now, but I'm thinking of somebody, and I can almost guarantee she'd be willing to help me out.
Could you, could you, off the top of your head, if if that was approved by by the town, roughly how many hours a year you could use a backup ACO in Lincolnville, just for some ballpark of of budget?
In the most perfect situation, never. 'Cause I'm always available. But then again, being a realist, I would I would dare say it wouldn't reach more than four, four hours a month. So, you know, maybe one or two hours a week at most. So I'm not sure, what's that, fifty-six weeks?
Something like that, yeah.
Something like that. And I my phone, I'm not gonna do any math.
It's less than a thousand, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I I would dare say that that would be a a safe number that would stay well under. So I think cost-effectiveness, I don't think would be a huge issue. It's finding the right person. That that'll be the biggest thing, is in finding the a person that isn't gonna wanna milk the town, for lack of a better word. Somebody that'll be honest and, you know, all that good stuff.
Any other questions for Heidi? Thank you very much for coming in.
Okay, any other questions, don't hesitate to give me a call.
Now we have the task before us of actually setting the harbor fees, now that we've had a presentation by both the Chair of the Harbor Committee and the Harbor Master, and having heard their suggestions. What does the Board say in terms of agreeing to round up to the nearest dollar? When it need be. I I ran some numbers, and they're all higher than the median. So it seems in most cases to just round up to the next nearest dollar.
Is that a motion that needs to be?
Uh, we do need an official motion.
For that separately, or that's part that's?
I think we can specify towards the end of the motion that the fees be rounded up to the nearest dollar.
Well, yes, I think rounding up makes the most sense.
Also, there's a, in in the description here that Nicholas had been arguing for, or been suggesting to fold the dinghy fee into the mooring fee. But I'm curious why or why not that would be, why would that not be a good idea?
I can see the logic of it in that we, as Board, decided that every mooring be assigned
To whoever's paying a fee.
A fee, or that whoever gets a mooring also gets dinghy privileges. And there could be circumstances, let's say, that someone does have a mooring and fails to mention that they have a dinghy, and doesn't end up paying the dinghy fee. So if you roll in the dinghy fee into the mooring fee, you're always paying for it.
But how many people get a mooring and don't have a dinghy? Does everyone who has a mooring have a dinghy? I would assume so, but I don't know if there's.
I don't know. The other thing that poor Melissa does, 'cause she's the one that does all the harbor renewals, is I believe you basically pre-complete the application for these people, and then send it to them so that they can ver- then verify that it's correct and accurate. If you didn't eliminate the dinghy fee, now that everyone has, that has a mooring, has the option to have a dinghy, we could pre-complete all those phone forms and say, check in the dinghy box, and then somebody would have to uncheck and subtract the amount of money. Which is do- which is doable, but if they, I can't imagine, personally, I don't have a boat in the ocean, but I can't imagine having a mooring and not having a dinghy to get there, but there may be somebody that does.
Well, and for years, we had people coming before us saying, I have a mooring, but I can't get to it. So what's the point of having the mooring if I can't get to the mooring? Because it was a privilege that was denied, and so I I see a lot of virtue in just sandwiching them together for both administrative purposes and for the streamlining consolidation, et cetera.
At some point, though, the other thing that I would bring out, is at some point, if the dinghy dock isn't overpopulated with dinghys, I can see you allowing somebody to have a dinghy only.
So right now, we don't allow that?
Right, that is, that is not in the ordinance. There's, there's no allowance for that sort of thing.
And then, would you have a s-
I mean, technically speaking, you shouldn't have a dinghy tied up to the dock without a sticker, but things that, that people fail to mention things, whatever, you know? Stuff, human nature happens. So, yeah, so I can see a lot of virtue in that. Administratively, David, would it make sense, and I concur with the Chair of the Harbor Committee's suggestion that we also change and specify the language within our fee schedule to speci- specify per vessel, that it is a fee per vessel, not per application?
Yeah, I mean, as long as the ordinance, which I don't know chapter and verse, as long as the ordinance doesn't say it's per, per organization.
Well, do we need a motion for that, or do we need?
I don't think so. I mean, the fee is commercial tour and passenger boats, including tenders and boats rentals.
Yeah, per vessel. Fee per vessel. I think needs to go in there.
So if, I don't mean to go into the weeds here, but why not? So if the owner of the Quicksilver, if the Quicksilver is down for a week or ten days for annual maintenance or coast guard inspection, I don't know what they do, and whoever owns that brings in a different boat, we're gonna charge them?
I think you would say, I I mean, I think it's fair enough to say that, you know, you have three vessels in service to service this particular And if you decided to bring in a third, that would have impacts both on the number of people traveling over the facility, using the using the facility, so, I mean, ostensibly, the fee package is designed towards in some small, very way can, very small way contribute towards the wear and tear on the facility. So it makes sense to me that if you have three boats utilizing the facility under a commercial permit, that you're paying for the three boats, not paying for one boat, while, you know, we have one fisherman paying for one boat, and you've got another commercial user sliding in three boats to tie up and come and go, so.
Just wanna be sure.
And if you take one out of service, hopefully your service is quick, and you can get it back in the water and get it back in service to utilize the infrastructure.
Okay, just wanna know when the call comes, 'cause Melissa gets it first and I get it second.
It's going to happen, because
Always does.
So does anyone care to make a motion?
Move that for the two thousand nineteen harbor fees, that Board adopt the Harbor Committee recommendation of a ten percent increase to the two thousand eighteen harbor fees, and that the fees be rounded to the nearest, up to the nearest dollar.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? Thank you very much.
And we want to address the putting, looping the dinghy fee into the mooring fee?
Yeah, do you wanna make a follow-up motion, just for the record?
Yeah, I move that we incorporate the the dinghy fee into the into the mooring fee.
Second?
For the twenty nineteen harbor fees.
Moved and seconded, just for clarification, so that we're having the dinghy fee attached to the mooring fee, so that their part and parcel, okay. So motion made, seconded. Any further discussion?
Is that a separate dinghy fee sent with the application, or is that the mooring fee pays for the dinghy?
Moring fee pays for the dinghy. Inclusive of
I just wanted to get that through my head straight.
And in the future, if we do allow people to have their own dinghy, then we can obviously change the fees year to year.
And we could very easily add a tender-only tie-up privilege or something to that effect. But it would seem that that would be, yeah, another conversation for another day. So if there's no further conversation, all those in favor? Thank you very much. And we have before us a draft of the special town meeting warrant. David, do you have anything to add before we? Do you have any comments before the Board has?
Uh, not beyond what was in the newsletter, I guess.
Okay, uh, does anyone on the Board wish to make any changes or amendments, or do you have any questions?
Looks good.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with it.
It did tentatively put in the warrant to have it at the school, not knowing what type of
I think that that's smart. I feel like every time we say, no, no, it'll be fine, inevitably, we have people mad at us, 'cause we have to stop it go over to the school.
And I reserve the space, if the space is available.
Okay, thank you. Well, since we're not making any changes to the draft that we have before us, you don't need a motion, so theoretically.
Yeah, if your Board's good with it, I will get the Budget Committee or a quorum of the Budget Committee together, explain it, try to get their recommendation, so that between now and December twenty-sixth, so that you all can approve it, sign it, and we'll get a posted note there. So hopefully, for anybody that's still listening at home, the meeting will be on Monday, January fourteenth, at six P M in the Lincolnville Central School.
Thank you. Moving rapidly along, we do have a couple revised proposals regarding regarding Seven Morton Road. Two agents having gone and actually seen the property.
Yes, I believe they saw it before, but I think they had a enlightened experience.
Um, so I would love to hear the Board's thoughts on price point, direction, et cetera.
Well, there's a ten thousand de- dollar difference between the two price points, right? We just go with the one, the higher one, and go down. Do we start higher and go down, or do, I don't know, I mean, there's merits to both of them, like
I mean, good selling practices says we wanna get as much money back for our taxpayers as we can. However, my two cents is, I've been mulling this over, I think that there's a more realistic price point, which isn't the higher one, considering the level of decomposition the property has been experiencing.
I I didn't have unsimilar thoughts. Well, and also in that second proposal, I kind of, just the the line of thinking of, well, let's start here, and, you know, every two weeks, depending on how much people are looking at it, let's drop the price X until we get some interest, and I'm thinking
It's a very dynamic proposal.
Yeah, and the assumption is, even that person's assumption is there's some, they're they're questioning whether even their starting number is gonna get any attention. So let's, you know, but let's not, you know, let's not sell the taxpayer short, let's, you know, try to see, you know, what looks like isn't an outrageous ask, and if it's getting no action, then you know, lower five thousand, and it's still getting those acts, you know, but I mean, the assumption is there seems to be some assumption, based on that person's experience, that there may not be any action on it still for a while. So I don't know about, that's why I was kinda, I see what you're saying, is where if you start with the higher number, maybe you're just taking a longer time to get to where there's some attention.
Yeah, and I also appreciated one of the agents' willingness to really get involved and, you know, and help, help, help get this off of our hands and into somebody else who's looking for projects.
I I thought that too, yeah.
Gentlemen, thoughts?
I feel that the lower of the two adjusted prices might be far above what it actually will sell for. And I think one of the things that I myself would actually consider going in there would be the surrounding neighborhood. And in my opinion, I don't think there's gonna be too many, too much interest there. And I think, I I just think, I I would like to turn it into, get it into somebody's hands that's gonna make it worthwhile, whether it be add to existing property that might be surrounding it, or someone can do something with that, but I think at the, even the lower price, considering what you look at when you go up the road to get to it, I just don't think someone is gonna be interested, and I'm sorry, that's my own opinion. I think it's gonna be a lot lower than that.
There's nothing that prevents someone from making an offer. And all offers will come to the Board for you to discuss what you wanna do or not do.
Right, and we as a Board decided we were gonna go with a Realtor to act as our agents for us, so it's, it seems like of of the two that we have to work with, one of them seems very clearly, like, understanding of the situation and ready to work with what we've got. Okay, well, seeing a lot of heads nodding, does someone care to make a motion?
I move that the Town Administrator be authorized to list the town-owned property of Seven Morton Road for sale with Scott Crockett of Remax, Jard and Cone, with an asking price of fifty-nine thousand, provided that any listing agreement or other similar document is in a form acceptable to the Town Attorney.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? Thank you very much. And we are yet again reviewing the two thousand twenty budget schedule, and with particular interest on the twelfth and the thirteenth of February being presentations by committees and department heads, and continuing on to day two of said presentations. being presentations by committees and department heads, and continuing on to day two of said presentations, um. Any squeaks?
Well, it's a perfect three in a row for me, I won't, I won't be here. This tour starts June eighth, so, that's it for me.
February?
Oh, I thought you were talking about June, oh, Feb- oh, February, I'm good.
February twelfth and thirteenth.
Oh, I thought you were talking about, I was looking at the June, I have June thirteenth, yeah, oh, no, forget it, February twelfth, thirteenth, I'm here, I'm good, yeah.
Great. Perfect.
I'm good, sorry, I was skipping right ahead.
Wait, is this the third town meeting you're not at?
The third, I'm gonna miss town meeting again, I'm sorry. And yeah, and yeah, like, last year, wasn't it like in July or something like, or is it always, it's always a two, but wow, well, yeah, it's just, you know, it's.
They, they can't go one show without, without the drummer.
Yeah, it's gonna be, that would be, yeah, that, yeah, well, yeah, I, yeah, maybe one year, and maybe after I've been on the board, but we'll, yeah.
That's completely done, huh?
You know, this, yeah, gotta go home for this one date.
We're just live streaming from the town meeting, yeah.
Just start canceling the gig instead of, yeah.
They just need to watch the town meeting.
Yeah, oh, oh, yeah, yeah, have the town meeting moved to, yeah.
Okay, anyway, sorry, we completely digress, um, yeah, okay, so the twelfth and the thirteenth are rather important days, so please put those on, pen them in, sharpie them into your schedule.
Those are six P. M.'ers?
Yes.
Put them in right now.
And they go for
However long.
As long as they need to, but.
Couple, couple hours, usually.
Usually a couple hours, usual. Um, any other dates in particular, David, do you wanna?
No, those are the critical dates at this point, because we wanna get it on the presenter's schedules as well, 'cause we have, what, a dozen or fifteen different people come in to talk to you, so we wanna get them all.
Yeah, and then we all.
Yeah, and then all the other dates, uh, that impact you will most likely be regular selectman meeting nights anyhow.
Yeah, and then we all agreed at a previous meeting regarding
Yeah.
the local election and the follow-up open portion.
And will those, will these, the twelfth and thirteenth be at the, here?
Right here.
Here, yep.
Yep.
Um, and I would just bring to your attention all of the other meetings that are not required by the selectmen, but are so helpful when selectmen, um, attend, because I feel like it alleviates a lot of confusion, and it also shortens our subsequent meetings when select board members attend, say, for example, the January fifteenth and January twenty-second meetings of review of provider agency packets, and also meeting with provider agencies, that has been historically a hot button topic, um, or maybe not hot button, but a contested conversation, both during the months and months and months of deliberation, leading up to the open portion of town meeting and during. Um, and it is always nice when select board members can speak directly to, um, their own edification of that process. Um, and that is not exclusive or limited to any of the other meetings that you see here on this page. Anything else on that topic? Okay, uh, now, we have a conversation regarding, um, Midco Solid Waste Corporation issues, um, that have been and are ongoing, um. I've been chatting with David over, uh, years, months, but recently with more frequency, um, regarding some things that have been of concern to me from an outside, not being in either of our two members sitting, and so none of this is a commentary on either of your involvement, um, but I think I would love to lob this over to your lap regarding the list and just a, a brief summary.
Yeah, um, just to back up for the benefit of anybody that might be tuned in, or for board members that aren't aware, um, as of last Friday evening, the Midco Solid Waste Board of Directors, uh, decided to, um, assign, handover, however you wanna phrase it, the day-to-day operations to the Executive Committee, which is made up of the four managers and administrators of the towns that make up Midco Solid Waste, and the, uh, Board Chair. Um, we started about two minutes after that meeting adjourned, with day-to-day operations, uh, met today, um, with Beth, who is, I butcher her last name, so I won't even try, Kortkowski, that, whatever Karen just said, um, who is the administrative assistant at the corporation, um, the facility manager's right hand for a number of years, about day-to-day operations, we've, um, the, the, thank goodness for the staff that they have down there, I think the, um, immediate, uh, concerns of trash and recyclables and landfill debris coming in and trash and recyclables leaving, and landfill debris getting placed in the landfill will be, um, seamlessly operated to the public. Um, we each have a little bit of a, came away from the meeting with a little bit of assignment, I'm gonna say that, um, probably a fair amount of my day for the next couple of days will be taken up with that organization. Um, we've got some issues that we're looking at, in addition to being assigned the day-to-day operations, the board, um, voted to allow the Executive Committee to expend up to an additional five thousand dollars for auditing services. Uh, this is in regards to the audit that is in the works for the last fiscal year, what ended in June. It's not necessarily looking at anything that's occurred since July one till today. Um, so that's kind of the, the, um, the very short term. Uh, the issues that were of concern, um, recently, uh, were things like agendas not being posted on time and made available to the public, contrary to the board's, um, bylaws, similar to your rules of procedure, the Midco's board has bylaws. Uh, we had an, uh, concern, uh, expressed by the Lincolnville Board members and some others, about, um, a lack of a purchasing policy for the corporation, which, uh, led to a, uh, award of a no-bid contract. Um, we had, um, December seventh, uh, December, November seventh, a, um, board meeting that had and allowed for telephone participation from a Board of Directors meeting, from a Board of Directors that, Director that wasn't present. Um, that's contrary, um, to what we believe to be the law. Um, hasn't ever been, my understanding, hasn't been tested in court, but con- certainly contracted to, contrary to what Jensen Baird, Gardner and Henry advises to Town of Lincolnville, um, contrary to what the municipal association, um, advises members of its members, um, and at one of the subsequent meetings after that occurred, uh, the Chair acknowledged that it shouldn't have happened there. I don't believe it would, if the member hadn't voted via phone, I don't believe it would have changed the outcome of the vote, but procedurally didn't necessarily follow, um, good, good government practices. Uh, we've had some examples, uh, recently of, um, inappropriate statutory references on agendas, um, that needed to be corrected, and then the most, uh, I guess, well, not the most alarming, they're all somewhat alarming, but the most troublesome recently, um, at the last meeting, it was, um, announced that the fee change that went into effect as of July one, um, didn't get changed at the gatehouse, and that, um, resulted in a loss of approximately forty-one thousand dollars worth of revenue to the corporation. So some people were getting paid, charged the new fees, and some were getting charged the old fees. Uh, the facility manager had estimated that a little less than half of that was going to be recoverable. In other words, they were taking the weights and charging people, uh, a fee. Um, some of these people get billed, it's common practice at the corporation, some people pay at the gate as they go. The people that paid at the gate when they went across the scales, you don't even know who they are, they're gone, the money's been collected. Uh, the people that were billed, um, at the wrong rate had apparently been notified, and they're making arrangements to collect that money back over time before the fiscal year ends.
Hope to. Retroactively invoice, yeah.
That's the, that's the current plan, and, um, I believe that the Board of Directors, uh, took an appropriate course of action, um, last Friday night, and I'd like to think that none of these things will occur, and that the, um, Executive Committee will make sure that agendas are properly prepared, posted, notified, and that this unfortunate incidents don't continue.
Um, I would, but we, before we get to whatever point or question you have, Josh, um, I would love to hear from both of our members who sit on the Midco Solid Waste, uh, Board of Directors first, and then I would be curious to hear from our other two select board members, um, regarding your thoughts. So, David, do you mind me?
Sure.
Shine a light on you first?
I've been thi- thinking over this, and I've been on the committee for three years, I think. I would pre- I predate Karen a couple of meetings, not much, but, um, it seems to me that in the last year and a half, uh, it reminds me of a bill of, hey, that's not, uh, bound quite tight enough, and the straw has filtering out of the sides, that things are getting, that pieces are falling out, and things are falling apart, and I'm not blaming anybody, I'm not saying any reason, but we've gone from a operation that, at best, I wouldn't say was a, um, smooth-running clock all, all the way, but it got things done and things happened to, um, some, something that you were wondering how much was, uh, how much was missed, and how much got through the, through, that was falling through the cracks and stuff happening later than, in my opinion, we really had time to make a decision on, um. It didn't happen all at once, but it, it seems like we're taking steps down the ladder, not up it, and ideally, you should stay the same or get better, not worse. And I guess for an overall comment, that's what I'd like to make on it.
Okay. Time?
I agree, uh, one hundred percent with David, um, we have been on the board pretty close to the same amount of time. It's very frustrating, and I did, uh, I did convey my frustration more than once about, um, participating in an organization that appears to have no organization, and I, on more than one occasion, um, let everyone know that I was very, very upset with the fact that we can't get anything done, that we aren't cohesive, we aren't a team, and then we have a shift in board members, and when you have a shift in board members, your experience and your longevity goes away, well, then everybody has to learn over again, and then you inject a couple of board members, one who speaks with an authoritative tone, which all in all, people don't, uh, don't care to challenge, and then you have another one who knows a lot about everything, but not too much about what we really need to do, and that's come together and march forward. Um, when one would speak, people didn't dare speak up, the other one would speak and be all over the place, and people would lose sight of the issue at hand. I brought that up numerous times to the Chair, uh, the previous Chair and the Chair, uh, that's there now. Um, I'm very disappointed, I feel that right up until now, we've let the Town of Lincolnville taxpayers down, and I feel that we have, uh, let the other three towns down with what we've been trying to do. Um, there's, there was a decision made, uh, last Friday night, I believe that was the third Executive Board meeting in that week. I unfortunately wasn't able to make that meeting, um, I definitely conveyed to the Chair and to David that he had my vote, because I felt that he and I were one, uh, on the decision with a, with, um, what we needed to do to attempt to right the ship. Um, I feel it's in good hands right now, short term, um, but Midco Solid Waste Corporation Board of Directors needs to be, needs to be the leading sector for Midco Solid Waste, and it needs to come back, and there needs to be some changes down there. I'm not sure if the complete board that's there are the ones, in my mind, I'm not sure if they are the ones to, uh, the board that we are part of, uh, can do that. Um, they're very strong personalities, there are personalities that I think have agendas, um, and that is not gonna help that board. My hope is that this board can convey to the other three towns our concern with how things have been run, how we feel things need to change, um, and do it in a way that is diplomatic but stern. I am sorry, I apologize to this board here that it appears that, that I have failed, but I have done my part, and I know David has done his part to get some things out on the table, and when, in a weighted vote situation, there are times when you feel that things aren't even considered. A lot of times, it's very important what you're considering and what you're moving to, but equally important is how you get there. And sometimes, if you don't get there the right way, you're gonna have problems with what you're doing. Um, and, uh, there has been a change now. I think there's more coming, or I think there needs to be more coming, but I think I would urge this board, um, to reach out to the other towns and indicate, um, our dissatisfaction, uh, with how it's gone up until now, and, um, some instruction with how to move forward.
Thank you. Josh?
Uh, I'm gonna first say that turnover, I think on any board is a huge problem, I mean, we've been together now for over a year, and the idea of half of us being replaced, I mean, that happens with elections, but there's a learning curve, and I think, I think personally, this board functions very well, because we, we've been working together, um, for over a year in Midco Solid Waste, and, God, it seems like every month, there's a new person, so that just inherently is a huge challenge, and I hope that some, that changes at some point, um, and luckily, both of you have been there for, for multiple years, so that, so we have that, um, stability. Um, I guess my, my first question is how, I, I look at this list, and, and there are a number of things on here that concern me. Uh, the, the forty-one thousand, uh, when I first heard about that, really shocked me, uh, I was, I was appalled, frankly, when I saw that. Um, but I'm, I'm wondering why this went to an emergency executive session versus just being part of a performance evaluation? Um, I don't know if you can answer that, but it just, it seemed, I, I was just surprised when I heard that there was an emergency meeting, and then suddenly. I, I was just surprised when I heard that there was an emergency meeting and then suddenly there was a change of, of management.
Without, without divulging the privilege put upon us for the executive sessions, I can say that the third executive session within a week, which occurred this past Friday, um, there was a report and a request from the corporation's auditor that they do some additional work in auditing, uh, the financial status of the corporation. Uh, based on their initial work, they have an initial contract that outlines certain services. And they thought that it required, uh, looking further and how that, that, that should be brought to the board in short ter- in the very short term, that my understanding is it came up at some point during last week and the board chair called the meeting Friday night.
It's my understanding, I'm sorry, um, that the forty-one thousand was brought to the attention of the board in a regular board meeting, um, by the manager. So that did not, that, that was in a regular, that was aired in public.
Yeah, and that, and that, and that change, that, that issue arose since the fiscal year ended. The auditor is looking from June, their, uh, July one seventeen to June thirty eighteen. And the forty-one thousand dollar issue occurred as of July first.
Right.
Eighteen through early November.
But to Josh's point, because I know you and I have had conversations about this well bef- really before a lot of this, both on current, ongoing and preceding issues, is that it's my understanding that the Midco Solid Waste Board of Directors just has simply failed to get a performance review on record.
There is, um, a recent one, correct?
Yeah. So, does that answer your question?
Um, kind of, I, I just, I mean, I'm assuming there's, there are things that cannot be divulged here. It just, I was surprised that, I guess, changing management so quickly, well, that, that had happened. Um, um, and yeah, I guess, I guess there's that and I, I, I guess, I, I'm just confused why I couldn't have waited until the next board meeting, Midco Solid Waste Board meeting or?
Well, we have to presume that tho- those on the, those on the front of the line are privy to some information that, that required that,
Action.
that decision to be made, but to your point, and do you have further points or?
My last one is where does the corporation go from here? Are, are, are the four of you gonna run this place forever?
No.
No, the corporation in my mind will be fine with the four directors running it in the interim.
And, right.
The, the manager is still employed by the corporation. This hasn't, the man- managers, um, are still employed by the corporation. It is ins- currently, the board's action inserts the four managers and administrators in a more active role. If you, I, I think you were at the meeting where the Executive Committee, um, made a little presentation about, you know, things that we thought could be done to help guide us in the right direction. And one of the things in that, and I obviously didn't put it in your packet, I should have, um, was that presentation had an organizational chart. And if you recall, the Executive Committee was off in the hinterland with no lines connecting it to. And I think the board recognized that, um, board members have other lives outside of running the board or running the corporation. And it required additional input from people that are paid non-staff, working for the towns, that have the town's best interest at heart. Um, hopefully a shorter term rather than a longer term. But we're here to do what's necessary to get that running like a better well-oiled machine. I won't say it won't be, it will likely have, still have its flaws to it. Um, when management goes back to a different strategy. But there are issues that were just needed a timely addressing, I think it's fair to say.
And I, and I think it's important to say that the current board couldn't get there to make decisions. So that's why the recommendation to move it to the Executive Committee.
Okay.
Okay, the board could not make decisions. And that's why, that is one of the reasons why the Executive Committee was asked for help to, uh, give us information as to what we needed to do to, straighten our policies and procedures, uh, get us going in the right direction. Okay? I, I will say that once the presentation was made by the Executive Committee, there was no action on the presentation.
Um.
By the board.
Yeah. John, I would love to give you an opportunity to say something, ask questions.
Yeah, um, so, being possibly the person in this room most in the dark about overall. I just wanna, I wanna, I wanna, um, speak to what I'm hearing and I want people to tell me if what I'm hearing is correct. And then go from there. So it sounds to me that there's some serious mismanagement going on at Midco Solid Waste, to put it bluntly. That the board, for whatever reasons, has been unable to properly do its job in overseeing this mismanagement. And both the management and the board's inability to oversee the management, both the mismanagement and the board's inability to oversee that have led to this list of problems, one of which is forty-one thousand dollars not charged where it should have been. Um, another is, uh, a no-bid contract going out, which maybe should have been bid. Um, another is the, uh, uh, person voting by telephone, which looks like that's not okay according to me, municipal association. And, um, so there's some dysfunction on the board's part. There's mismanagement and the board isn't, wasn't able to, so all these problems have occurred because of that. Is that a general, okay, so there must have been a meeting where that was like, we have an emergency here, there's serious mismanagement and the board has not been doing its proper oversight. We need help. And so now the town managers are stepping in to help with that.
Apparently.
Okay.
The meeting, if I just may, the meeting where, actually, I think it was a couple of meetings before the Executive Committee made their presentation, the board did agree to task, and I think that's the word that was used, task the Executive Committee with their thoughts with how to help move in a more positive, um, productive way. They made their, they made their presentation to us. It was very clear, it was exactly what some of us were looking for. No action was taken.
All right, so, uh, so it's a weighted vote. So how, how things go on that, on that board is a weighted vote, that Ken and Rockport have more say than Lincolnville will hope. So if, and my understanding is that Dave and Kern, uh, my understanding of when you guys voted against, um, granting this no-bid contract to the, um, food composting business, what are they called, scrap dogs?
Scrap dogs.
Your objection to that had mostly to do with the failure of process.
Correct. It had absolutely nothing to do with the vendor or what we were trying to achieve. It had everything to do with the way it was not vetted. There was more information out there, which I think we were able to find with the stroke of a key on a, on a computer, just as an example, which was not put in front of us. It seemed like it was someone creating a job for someone that they had their hand on their shoulder.
Nepotism. Well, there was a risk of, of the appearance of nepotism.
Correct.
Okay. And as selectmen, and that board is made up of all selectmen, correct?
No.
Oh, it's not?
It's made up of per- of people from the Owen Cassas. He's not a selectman. He's a, he's a taxpayer of the town of Rockport.
He was a former selectman.
He was a former selectman.
Former representative in Augusta.
It, it can be, the, the intra-local agreement for the corporation establishes basically a preference that they be s- to selectmen from each community. But it certainly allows for others with knowledge and experience or wha- however they phrase it, to be appointed to that board.
All right.
But you were correct, in, in, in practice, with the exception of Owen, um, they're, they are all current sitting selectmen.
Right, but we've, we've had over time, people that haven't been selectmen that have been very good board members down there, for sure.
So, but what I'm getting at is that being that most of the people in, on a board like that or in this particular board would be familiar with the importance of the process of bidding things out or avoiding the appearances of nepotism or any of these conflicts of interest type situations. So when you guys voted against that, and this is just to address this particular problem, which has arisen from this general lack of competent oversight. When you guys voted against that, it wasn't because you were against composting food. It was because you were against that this didn't look good. You're, this, they're, they're bidding this to a person that it's, you know, they're just gonna hand this to somebody who's already there.
That's correct. There were two things that just didn't look good. The first thing is, I got right out on the table first, probably three or four meetings prior to that, was the guy is a, he, he works for Midco Solid Waste.
Yeah.
Which, in the grand scheme of things, the attorney said, that's really not a problem here. But to me, talking with a taxpayer of the town of Lincolnville, it was a problem. But the other part of it was how it was done. It was done from the inside out by the manager of Midco Solid Waste.
I would, I would have had no problem with an employee doing what he's done. And I told him that, I took him aside after the fact and I had a talk with him just to let him know that what I did was not slamming them or their corporation. That was, it was a procedure that got there and I don't have a problem with what we did. I have a problem with how we got there. Uh, if there had been two other people bidding for the, to do the same thing, uh, even if they'd been a little bit higher, I might very well have been persuaded to go with them for various reasons. But when there's nobody else, it leaves a very bad, um, stain, we'll call it, on the board for, uh, the way the corporation, the way it's done, just the fact that there is other choices out there and none were presented to be looked at.
And so if you guys were voters from Lincolnville, I mean, from, uh, Camden and Rockport, then your opposition to this lack of procedure would have changed the course of what happened there. However, being a minority voice in that weighted vote situation, you were outvoted and so things continued in a way which led to these other, but my, what I'm getting at is that this general lack of procedure pr- of following sound procedural good governance.
John, I need to clarify something, um, just, just for the record. Uh, so my, my recollection is there were four meetings where scrap dogs was discussed. There was the first one where it was just a general presentation, there was no vote. And I was like, all right, these are Tessa and, um, Davis and, and, and the concept was brought up and thank you very much. And then I believe a month later, there was, there was a, a presentation and there was a vote on supporting their concept. And that vote was actually, my understanding of that was six to one, you voted for it. And that was not the contract, you were the sole.
I was, I was against it.
You're against it.
From the beginning.
Yeah, yes. Um, and so I, I, I completely understand the concern about, uh, uh, awarding a no-bid contract. But I think we need to remember that the majority of the board was okay with that. They voted, they're, they're on the record saying they were okay with that. And then when it went to the actual conver- uh, the contract vote, that was, that's.
I will, I will also now interrupt you and say the board has also, as a majority, as a weighted vote, been okay with a lot of these
Yeah.
very ser- serious issues. So to use that as an argument in favor of pushing through no big contract, I think doesn't hold water. So not to get mired in the issue of food waste recycling, but to focus it back on. And I don't want to cut you short, but I would like to refocus on the heretofore generally agreed upon, uh, dissatisfaction and lack of management that we have and are observing with the day-to-day operations of the Midco Solid Waste facility.
And, and to that, and why, I was just using that as the one, so we got this list of things that have happened, which have been pushed through by a weighted vo- vote, which has been not generally following sound procedure. According to what we know as select people in our job representing the best interests of our taxpayers.
Yeah, I don't know if there's been a lot of things that have been pushed through by a weighted vote.
I would say, or failed to act upon.
Um, well, it, I think that, I think that even, that the entire board recognized that there is a weakness in the management structure that they are now attempting to address. And, you know, these are, these are more perhaps symptoms of a, of a greater ill that has an opportunity to be changed. And, I mean, if we go back to, I don't want to give everybody a history lesson, but when I first arrived in Lincolnville and the corporation was overseen by the four managers and administrators, we got together every Thursday afternoon in Rock, usually in Rockport and sat down with what was then, I don't know what his title was, but they would call him Yard Foreman. And the issues would come up and the finance people would give us a little bit of finance information and the people would give us more hands, hands, hands-on, day-to-day stuff. And that corporation has grown substantially, both in terms of dollars, but also in terms of the regulatory environment within which it runs. State oversight of solid waste and recycling is a whole lot more compli- complicated than it used to be. And I don't know how many years ago it was, ten or a dozen years ago, give or take. Um, the Executive Committee recognizing that Midco Solid Waste regulatory structure had grown, the corporation had grown, our responsibilities in our towns had grown. The manager's position was created and the Executive Committee took a less active role. and the executive committee took a less active role. And we've had at least three managers that I can think of and a couple of different, at least one interim that I can think of. Um, and it's progressed to where it is today. And I think it's we're kind of hitting the reset button to say, this is some aspects has worked very well. In some aspects, it hasn't worked completely well. But we need to get it all to work very well. And I think that's why the board chose the action they've recently done, to make sure that it's all going in the very well category.
So, because I like to think of our board as an opportunity as being solutions oriented, rather than just sitting here and banging out our list or, you know, circling around and around and around our various grievances and frustrations. Um, I, David and I put this on the agenda so that we could have one, my first priority or goal was to get a general consensus and agreement that there are issues. And issues as it pertains to and for me are unacceptable as stewards of our taxpayers' dollars. I do not feel okay remaining silent and not stepping up in support of our two board members who sit on the Midco Solid Waste Board of Directors in affirming their decision-making paradigm and further adding our own voices to the other select board members who both are and are not sitting on the Midco Solid Waste Board of Directors. Um, so getting a general consensus, these that these are some of the major issues, um I would like to add that I have been thoroughly dismayed in the lack of incorporation of ECO Maine into our communities um and into their general presence, despite the fact that we are paying them as our contracted solid waste disposal. Um, and that I follow them on social media and they are multiple times daily posting grant opportunities, recycling programs, community outreach, school education programs. I was appalled to see in October a five thousand dollar grant opportunity for um member schools of which we are one of the seventy-three communities at ECO Maine Services. Um, did any anyone and did you, were you guys given a heads up on the the board that that was something that our s- our member schools should be applying for?
We were given a heads up by the manager about his tour of fiber.
Okay. So that's another, you know, we are paying for a service uh for a qualified and committed service and who they have committed themselves and they are also part of their ongoing outreach is updates regarding legislation, uh international trade policies that are affecting recycling, uh encouraging food waste recycling programs in schools and encouraging school, not to belabor the, but that's a huge error in my mind when a managing body fails to get ourselves opportunities and it and it's not necessarily fair to compare anyone else to David because we are so fortunate to have him as an administrator, but I I can't even tell you how many different grant opportunities and and community outreach, education, et cetera, et cetera, that we have been benefit benefic- whatever, we've benefited from. So, um, I would like to encourage the board to support a motion uh to um task myself and David with drafting a piece of communication that would have to be approved by the select board, um, that addresses both our issues. Um, and in addressing our issues, um, speak to any objectives we might have um and any offerings of solutions we may have as the Midco Solid Waste Board of Directors and the executive committee move towards trying to form a more perfect union, so to speak. Um, because frankly, I I suspect there could be some other board members who are so busy doing what they do in their life and their day that they may not be fully apprised. Who knows? But I think that it bears that our citizens are aware that they know that we're working on behalf of all of their taxpayers. I mean, I can't, I, the idea that it would be an oops that forty-one thousand dollars of our portion of taxpayers' dollars just whoops. And that the answer is that we'll transfer money from undesignated funds, which is also our taxpayers' dollars. There's no money that we handle that doesn't come from some hard-working person. Um, so that's that's
Well, and and
That's my spiel.
No, and and to that, uh, and I just wanted to add, the reason I was asking those questions and saying this wasn't to focus specifically on, you know, the scrap dogs or or one aspect of this and to, um, I I just wanna get a grip on, eh, for me, what what I was seeing in in offering a direction of, one of the things I would like to see in that piece of communication to the board is an an ask of um either developing or eh policies, procedural guidelines or policies that don't, like, you know, it says here the lack of a purchasing policy or that, you know.
Right.
Could they, could we ask them
To look at.
to to develop a purchasing policy, you know, as in as in a way to address that first thing. Um, but also, you know, as selectmen, we we have regular procedures that we go through to get anything done. And so maybe um thinking about those things and asking that that board func- functions similarly. Um, in in, you know, and I I guess the purchasing policy is, eh, I just, I'm I'm picking that out because it's such a tangible and obvious one here, but but there might be other other things we can brainstorm where you would say, you know, can we put these into that board's guidelines so that um any board, when you get the, cause I'm thinking about that high turnover thing, every time you get this high turnover, um, though there still is a necessity to get people, new members brought up to speed on what institutional knowledge exists, you you would also have a little bit more structure in place to help muddle through the business, the day-to-day business of 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 running that corporation, you know, while people are being brought up to speed in a way that reduces the chance of these sorts of pitfalls.
Yeah.
Um, I see some of the problem is that um, the corporation is run by the interlocal agreement, the four towns, and the bylaws of the corporation. And one, most of us, myself included, up until we started um having some issues, never bothered to read them as thoroughly and as carefully as we should. Um, and some of us as a group may not have read all of them as well as we should have. I think both the bylaws and the interlocal agreement need updating. They're not they're not what we need to run the corporation today. It worked fine ten years ago, when they were all fifty or twenty years ago when they were written. But we gotta start somewhere, which is why we had the, uh, why I was supportive to have the managers come in and give us give us a guideline, give us something to to shoot and go for. Um, down the road, that is something that we need, we as a board need to address and go with. But as it stands right now, we wouldn't be where we are today had we followed what was in there better than we did. There is guidance in there. It's just through lack of everybody follow, myself included, following all the ru- all the things that we should do, um. We didn't follow the rules and regulations to the point that we should have.
Well, and I I would say for my part, that is some of my own shock and dismay that I will own with this particular circumstance is that I can't fathom how any municipal representative could, in all good conscience, follow one particular particular operational paradigm and then abandon that when representing multiple towns. But there it is. And I will say, so part two of my ask of bringing this conversation up, so I would um, love to have a motion regarding a piece of communication that goes directly to each and every member on the Midco Solid Waste Board of Directors, but also the member towns and administrators. Um, and then the second uh item that I would like consensus on the board is to put on a future agenda to have us look at our own purchasing policy as it exists because it is not necessarily overt. And we have all benefited from having excellent mentors and excellent administrative support to facilitate our, what I have observed in the past is a responsible um decision-making regarding our taxpayers' dollars. I mean, a good example is that while we now have a clear cap of eight thousand dollars, there are any number of circumstances where we have bid out much less. The harbor mowing being one, uh, that is pretty small potatoes, but wanting to be completely transparent in the way that that is both incorporated into the budget. But that's practice. And that doesn't bind any one of our select board members to policy. And not knowing what any given select board member may do in the future at any given board meeting, I think it behooves us now that we have a unified essentially, I think we all have this, the the right um goals in mind when it comes to sitting in a seat that it bears us having a conversation so that we're actually walking the talk. You know, we're not pointing fingers at other communities
Right.
or boards for saying, you don't have this. We have it, but could it be better? Is it as transparent? Is it as clear procedurally so that in the future, other select board members will benefit from having that clarity? So those are two things. So thoughts, conversations, discussions on that?
Um, as long as we can review, and you said we would.
Oh, yeah. Yes. Yeah, and I would say that, I mean, it's just after eight, but if there is anything specifically now, so if someone wants to make a motion and second motion and in discussion, if there are particular points, I think that any one of us have to make, I absolutely welcome any and all suggestions. And then also, I think, if anything else comes up after this meeting, that a direct line of communication to David would make sense too. And then we can all approve a draft. Thoughts on that? Motion?
Yeah, I guess I'm trying, I'm thinking of a motion like, uh, I word this motion. Well, I move that our chair and town administrator draft for the board's approval, review and approval, um, a communication with the Midco Solid Waste Corporation Board of Directors. Our concerns over the recent um developments resulting from mismanagement. Or I, you know, I don't I don't wanna offend anybody, but uh, uh
Recent business priorities.
Recent, uh, yeah, and and to uh would would that would that communication make suggestions about um you know, possible solutions, like, you know, what 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 to do going forward? Uh, um.
Okay, so so moved.
So so so.
Seconded. Okay, so discussion. Um, could I request an amendment to expand those receiving to um other membership towns, sitting board members and administrators or managers?
Oh, yes. Please do.
I'll I'll minimize it.
Thank you. So discussion, points that anyone, while we're convened here, feels like would be outside of what we've discussed and should be reflected in the minutes, um, anything pertinent that you feel like should be included or brought up?
For me, it was and still is very disappointing that the Board of Directors did not act on the recommendations that they asked for from the Executive Committee. In my opinion, if that had happened, um, this ship would not be tipping as far as it is. Um, we have a lot of confidence, uh, I say, when I say we, I mean, the four towns have a lot of confidence in their um, very qualified town administrators, town managers. And they are good. Collectively, they're really good. And I can't for the life of me figure out why that was disregarded. So there needs to be more consideration for the Executive Committee's opinion. I I just, I just can't believe it. Uh, I'm I'm living it.
So some mechanism to have.
Needs to be a mechanism in place. There really does. And if I were to, maybe this doesn't apply here, but I know uh, a chain of command tree. I know where I would I know where who would who would be on the top, who would be in the middle. Um, it certainly wouldn't be the board on the top at this juncture. I think we can get there. Um, but this, I I've told you guys everything. It's very frustrating.
Josh, you have some thoughts?
Uh, I think we all recognize it and this letter may be a good place to put it, just that I think the biggest issue is turnover. And finding a mechanism to get to get people to stay on longer, to to not quit that way for, I mean, there was a recent person from a town that was there for a few months. I was really excited that person was there and then they just, next thing I heard, that person quit. And and that was really disappointing. Um.
Our rumor was the dysfunction of how things were going. The person didn't want to be part of it.
Oh, wow.
Gentlemen, any additional thoughts at the moment?
Well, other other than, you know, maybe the, as a starting point, that the the communication addressed these specific fi- you know, offer solutions, uh, or, you know, address these specific five things, um, you know, ways in which this type of thing, you know, ha- um. But yeah. Pretty general at this point.
I mean, I wanna make it clear from my own standpoint that this is in no way, shape or form to be meant or perceived as a micromanagement of the Midco Solid Waste Board of Directors. But more importantly, and its core theme being solidly focused on the fact that as stewards, as our, of our taxpayers' dollars, that we can no longer sit silent and allow our our money to be mismanaged. I mean, that's the
That, yeah.
That's the core, that's the core principle. So just so I can make it clear that me personally, as a select board member sitting here in this chair, that's the driving factor.
Yep. That's about right. And I just, I also wanna thank Dave and Kern for standing up for what's
And sticking with it.
And sticking with it and standing up for what was really right for our taxpayers and being what sounds to me like the lone voices there for a period that that we're willing to do that. And um you know, having caught some flack for that and still holding your ground, uh, you know, and I think we're seeing now that your position has is it's bearing out that you took the right position. And I just wanna acknowledge that and thank you.
Thank you.
And your experience, I think, is what led And your experience, I think, is what led to being able to make that right decision, and I hope to learn from that myself.
Okay, so, having thoroughly discussed it, if there are no more discussion points, all those in favor, um, and can I get a general consensus from the board that at a future, our next board meeting, um, ideally that we are all present for, uh, we can review our purchasing policy agreement as it exists and make any updates necessary?
Sure.
Or take this, take the steps towards that?
Yeah.
Fantastic. Um, is there any other, uh, business that the board wishes to discuss? Uh, we do have the animal control officer log in our non-agenda items, if you haven't read through that.
It's an interesting one.
I, I agree with that is, I do enjoy reading that as well.
Yeah, yeah. Um, great, fantastic, if we have no more business, can we have a final, what? One?
Warrant.
Oh!
Sorry.
Right, and we also have a, um, special treasures warrant with the ongoing expenditures for the heating system?
Mm-hmm.
So, there's that in there also.
Just, uh, before you go and approve that, um, we've, and speaking of management and trying to improve all the time, we've, uh, Kayla and I met with, um, Bill Brewer and Dean from, um, Bill Brewer's office, the, our, your auditors, the towns auditors, the board hires. Um, the special warrants, um, the capital campaign warrant, or monies are nearly exhausted or will be shortly, um, with the new fiscal year being July one, um, rather than run these on special warrants, they're likely to be included on the regular town warrant, and then we'll reimburse ourselves from any monies that remain in those accounts, if that makes any sense. So you'll still see the bills, but they'll be, instead of having a separate checking account for all these things like we do, we're gonna have one.
Because my brain's getting tapped for energy, and I don't want to make this meeting any un, longer than is necessary, and I feel like I'm not adequately prepared to have this conversation, can we have a better explanation in perhaps a diagram or flow of this money, so I can understand? I mean, it, it, it is still somewhat of a mystery to me, the flow and, and I feel like it shouldn't be, but hey, since we're talking about edu- educating ourselves and being aware of all of the imp, implications of our decisions, um, school monies, cap, it's a capital expenditure, but is this coming out of, ah, huh, what magical pot of money is this coming from?
Which one?
And how, and, and, and when it, when I hear you say it is nearly depleted, and we're just going to include it in our regular warrant, what does that mean, why, et cetera, et cetera? So we don't necessarily have to get into it now unless it's a really short...
I could give you the short version now, and the long version...
Let's do the short version now, and, and...
Uh, when the school was built, twelve years ago, maybe longer, the town did a fundraiser, and the, there was a challenge grant offered by MBNA that would match us dollar for dollar up to a million dollars. So if we donated, if we could fundraise a million dollars, MBNA would match that up, so in essence we'd have two million dollars, primarily for enhancements to the school. When the, when schools are constructed with state monies, they say, they, they're paying the bills, so they dictate to you how big classrooms are, how big the gymnasium is, how small the toilets, you know, everything. Um, the town had a building committee, I guess for lack of a better word, that recognized that that might not be well-suited for what we wanted, and it's not uncommon for towns to do either fundraisers or locally appropriate more money to get a bigger gym, or cafeteria, or a stage, or whatever. Um, the townspeople through various means raised in excess of nine hundred thousand dollars, which was again matched dollar for dollar, um, for these enhancements. They stopped raising money because they didn't know, I hate to say it in these terms, they didn't know what they were gonna spend it on. Bids came in reasonable, and the enhancements that the town wanted to do, they had enough money to do. When the project was completed, and the state had paid their share, and the town had paid its share from these other capital monies that were raised, there were several hundred thousand dollars left over that was in this capital campaign account, which really wasn't taxpayer, taxpayer derived, not from property taxes, might have been from buying raffle tickets or whatever by taxpayers. Um, the capital campaign account remained in a separate account from the town, was a town account overseen by, at one point, the com, construction committee. The money got turned to the town, in essence went into a reserve fund that slowly but surely has, monies been coming out of it. Um, the biggest things were the siding project that recently occurred, um, both the, well, two walls that have been done. Um, this past year in budget time, there was, the school committee put forth a plan to expend so much for the walls, so much for heating, so much for this, some of it was planned to come out of capital campaign money, some of it was planned to come out of their school operating budget, um, with the recognition that the capital campaign money basically was going to, gonna go away, we're gonna spend it all in this current fiscal year. Um, so that's where we are, so the only monies that we should have outside of the regular warrant process when we're done is things like, uh, the Coombs Griffin, we have Coombs Griffin and Education Account, and a, uh, municipal account, two separate pots of money that were given to us so generously by Coombs Griffin. Um, the towns monies that we spend, we've spent very little of since we were given that money, um, we've always run it through the regular warrant, just like what you approve at these meetings. Um, the education money, for whatever reason, we set up a separate warrant and account for, um, we discussed with the auditors the necessity to do that, it's kind of like you have in two sets of books, yes, it's clear and concise, but why?
Mm-huh.
And we asked if it was appropriate, or was okay to run it through just the regular AP like we do with all the other, with this Coombs Griffin, why are we doing this?
Mm-huh.
They said it's all under the control and purview of the Salkman and the School Committee, yes, you can do it that way, so why not? And, um, Kayla and I had a discussion as to when, and the logical break for me is at the start of the fiscal year, so that we're not auditing three sets of books, so to speak.
Mm-huh, okay.
So, is that a long enough expl, explanation? Make any sense whatsoever?
Yeah.
We're trying to, um, the information's still all gonna be there, if somebody comes in and says, you know, what did you expend Coombs Griffin education money on, it's...
Right.
And out comes the report, and you can go dig up all the bills, versus grabbing a paper or warrant off the shelf and handing somebody a notebook.
Right.
Trying to get all of our processes done kind of consistently the same way.
Yep, okay. So, we have a special warrant and the treasures and payroll warrants to approve and sign. Can I have a motion?
I move that the board approve the treasures and payroll warrants. And the special warrants.
Moved and seconded, uh, any discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? Thank you very much, and the final motion, please.
I move that we adjourn.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? Thank you very much.
There are some papers floating around, need to sign their, oh, their, from previous meetings.
Great.